Councilman Wells.
Here.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Public hearing, old business number one.
An ordinance to approve a request for Mimi McKee Catherall owner to rezone two zero seven South Holly Street per survey by Clifford Webb dated two twenty-one nineteen sixty-two from RM dash two to MX dash C. This is in District Two, Lacy Landrell.
This is a request to rezone the property. There is not a intentioned business yet for this property, but this is a request to rezone. During the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, the owner did agree to prohibit the use of light industrial, which is one of our kind of odd things about MXC that that is also allowed there. The MXC zoning is the closest in proximity to this. And as you can see from the last page or next to last page of your packet, it does show the properties that are across the street and on the other side of the block that are MXC. However, this one to the north is RM two, to the south is RM two, and directly across the street is RM two, which is the current zoning for this parcel. In past discussions, there have been concerns about the amount of parking that this would allow at this site. Those would all have to be determined by the actual business that came in. In our Unified Development Code, parking amounts are determined by the type of business that comes rather than just its zoning. So that would still be another thing that would be examined depending on how this came to be used later. We do not have any official that were added to the report of of opposition, but you will see in the public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission, there were several people in from that neighborhood area that spoke out against the project. So just so that you're aware of those, that's on page two of your staff report. You can see their names, and I do believe some of the folks are here tonight.
Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Alton Lewis. I guess for purpose of this, my address is four hundred East Thomas Street, First Carrying Bank. We have, as y'all know, done a lot of development over there. And this lot is fifty feet by, I think, a hundred and fifty. If you put any type of business over there, if you look at the list of what can be done, it's everything in the world from bars, restaurants, whatever, all of which have requirements for parking places that they have to provide. There's no way in the world this this any business on this location could meet those requirements without using our parking places, the neighbors, you know, everybody around. So we strongly object to it because that's what is going to happen. It's going to be over there, they'll, if they can do it, they'll put a bar, they'll put a restaurant, they'll put whatever, and everybody will park. If they're going, they won't have any choice because there's no place to park except all over the neighbors. So we very strongly object to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have made this objection known repeatedly, so.
Is there anyone else on this item?
Henry Bottom, my name is Tom Gray for Ms. Catherall. The bank's objection is about parking. Parking would be addressed if the use of the of the property were changed. The first permitted use is residential, that's what it's being used for right now. The overall plan for this property, the city plan, is to make this commercial. So her request is consistent with the master plan for the city, and any concerns about parking should be reserved for the ultimate use if there's a change in use. That's all we need to say. My name is Tom Gray, I'm an attorney. I am a sole practitioner. And I'll give you my card so you can have it for your record.
The problem is, they can't hear because he wasn't in the mic, so that's one of the issues there.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
The the property north of the of this property is a home, I believe, and we've heard objection from that homeowner, am I am I correct in that? Did you want to say anything?
Are they here?
My name's Carol Aikman, I reside at two oh three South Holly. I am totally against the zoning for for commercial due to the parking, and I stated that a couple of times before. And I'm in agreement with what Alton Lewis is saying, to put another restaurant. Once it's zoned commercial, it can be anything. And I definitely do not or would prefer not to have another commercial property, a restaurant, whatever, serving alcohol. I don't want to be wakened up any time of the night by unruly customers parking in my front yard, which belongs to the city anyway, because it's on the other part of the sidewalk. But still, I'm the one that cleans that up, I'm the one that mows, I'm the one that picks up all the trash, and you know, I would definitely not agree with what they're wanting to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Again, the concern of the neighbor is that what might happen in the future, which you would approve as far as the use of the property. We believe that's a premature objection to the zoning, and we remind you that the zoning is in accordance with the master plan for the city.
My understanding is that.
Step to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
I'm Mimi Catherall, I'm the owner. My understanding is that the site plan, whatever I may do with the property, is where the parking should be addressed. I was told this by the civil engineer that I had working on the property. Right now, this is just a zoning hearing, so.
I I think if I could, the the concern is not knowing what it could potentially be, right? And I get that you just want to get it rezoned, but without knowing, is it an office with a certain amount of, you know, daytime hours or business hours? Is it a restaurant? And yeah, of course, like if it's a restaurant, you gotta have a grease trap. If it's a bar, you gotta have permits. You know, parking doesn't come to us, so you know, we don't get a lot of say-so over a lot of the planning in that type of situation. If it's rezoned, here's your list, you make you meet the requirements, great. And personally, District Two, this isn't my district, Iowa District has a very robust overlay to protect the integrity of single-family housing. And I know you have a lot of mixed commercial around you, but you you have residents right next to it, you have other.
That's honestly, that's the only residence in that area, is the one right beside me besides myself. Everything else is not occupied. Everything else is either used. Mr. Thompson uses all of that across the street for his electrical business. The bank has the rest of my block. So it's only myself, which I'm prepared to remove myself from the premises if I need be, but it's only one person left on that area that occupies that, you know, that uses it as a residence. So.
There are twelve lots in this square, nine of the twelve are zoned commercial.
As I said, I think, you know, the site plan should address it, and honestly, I'm only here for the zoning. I do not have a business established, I have not filed for a business license. I do not have a tenant, I do not have a contract with anyone. I'm just currently at this time in looking, seeking zoning.
You have two residential homes, one on each side of this lot? It looks like the fifty by one fifty and there's other two little fifty by one fifty lots.
There's only one home beside me, and there's an empty lot next door to me.
Okay.
No one lives on it, it's just grass.
So you own two of these three, one fifty by one fifty?
She owns the middle one.
Middle.
Okay, all right. And then on each side of you have two, one home on each side or not?
No, there's one home on one side and grass on the other side.
The side that's grass.
It's zoned residential, but there's nothing on it.
Right, it's zoned residential, and it's owned by the people that have the electrical company across the street.
Okay.
So there there are basically two houses being occupied residential, and she has one of them. And she doesn't own any of the property in the square.
There is also another property across the street from where I reside, from where she resides. It would be directly across from on the corner of Coleman.
Hanson.
On the corner of Hanson and Holly. Across the street, and that is also a rental property, that's a residential. And there are people residing there.
Lacy, will you go to the RM, the other one? Yeah, so you have resident, you have residential across the street, that's what you're talking about? That bottom left corner?
Then we we had one of these kind of similar another a few months back. I think they got a conditional use, but we I think we kept it the same zoning. Wasn't it over there on the other side of town on Oak Street? Was it, was it?
South Cherry.
South Cherry, okay, that was, I thought that was South Oak over there, it was over there with that, about apartments, I think, the real estate firm, I think. Was that, wasn't that an Oak Street or that was Oak Street, I thought, wouldn't it? The one a couple of weeks back?
The one, the few weeks back when people came in with a business plan, they wanted to do like a coffee shop or art.
No, no.
That was the real estate office.
The real estate, I'm talking about the real estate.
That was the real estate office for Ms. Dan.
That was on Oak, I thought of.
It was.
It was on Oak, and so they kept it the same zoning, but we did a conditional use, and it was in a, wasn't it in the same? Was it RM two or was it a?
It was in an RM two.
Yeah.
She knew, she was asking only for one use, and so that's why it was it was done a little differently.
Yeah.
This one, we we don't know what the use would be.
I just wanted to confirm that that's, we kept it the same, pretty sure it was conditional use. She came with something, it was already in zone there, and it was surrounded and in the same zoning as as before, so. So, yeah.
Is there anyone else? And I think a lot of the questions coming from not actually knowing what it's going to be. And we've run into that instance before with another, I can't think of what it was, but we ran into that before, where we didn't know what it was and ended up agreeing to do something and it came back on another way, but. Anyone else on this item?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. One of the issues that I see, yeah, it's a brewery over in my district that wasn't nothing on paper, and we sat there, okayed it in an industrial industry. We okayed it. Now, across the street, right on side of the church, they want to sell alcohol. So that's why we asked that, whatever anybody want to do. And in the past, for everything I done, from parking to planting a flower, I had to have it on the paperwork. And I don't know what's going on now with planning a zone. So it's hard to vote on something when you don't know what it gonna be. And I don't blame the residents, you know, I want to know exactly what's going on from the paper, from the bottles, everything. When you have anything done with alcohol, these are the things you have to deal with, somebody got to clean it up. And so I can understand, and I feel the residents from what they saying. And really, Ms. Gonzalez, this is in your district. And I know it's in your district, and that's why I be liking, and let me say it again. I like for the person, whoever district it is in, let them talk about it. Let them sit here and say if they want it or don't want it. Something in District Three, I don't need the councilman voting on it first. Let the people in my community see if they want it, in the community first. And so all the way up to this day, I still go by what the residents say. I never make a decision on my own, because anything you doing in the community, it affects them. Yeah, I stay there, but they put me up here for a reason, I'm just the voice. So that's what I believe in, let Ms. Gonzalez make a decision. And I brought this up before about when stuff going on in the district. A prime example, I see Chris Ruffin over there, he wanted to do a barbecue place in Kip District. And the resident said do it, then the resident say didn't do it, but that was in Kip District. So Kip have to make the decision, it start with him first. And and that's how we need to do as a council people. We need to sit there and let the council person make that decision if they want it or not, even when voting, you know? And I brought this up, you know, if it's in Councilwoman Gonzalez's district, let it start out with her. She know what's best for the district better than me. I don't know what's over there, I don't know what's going on, I just hear the people speaking out on it. And so I think we need if the people in that district elected Councilwoman Gonzalez, let her speak on it, see what she have to say about it, and then I go for there. And I said it before, if she want it, I accept it. If she don't want it, I'm not going to accept. Yeah, I got my opinion, but guess what? Ms. Gonzalez the one stay over there, so they the ones have to deal with it. Thank you.
I'll just say, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I I feel like we should all judge what we're supposed to be doing. I'm not going to ask you to vote one way just because it's my district. And if you ask me to vote one way because it's your district, I'm I may not necessarily do that, because I feel like we all need to look at the rules, look at the, listen to the people when they come. And if it's something that's a big issue, there should be people here talking about it. We have people talking about it. I've, I think I've portrayed a little bit of how I feel about it, but I'm not going to ask anyone to vote a certain way.
Al Nicolas, third six oh seven, Highway one ninety west. What I'm getting out of this is it's been residential for so many years since sixty-two. So I can understand they don't have, you know, it's only, the lot is what, fifty by a hundred and fifty? Is that correct?
Yes.
So you don't have much room there to really, you know, put parking and stuff like that. So I think the residents probably is, you know, not going to be in favor of going commercial. I see no reason for it to be commercial when you got residential all around. Thank you.
Excuse me, anyone else? Right, due to publication issues, the public hearing for final adoption for the following ordinances will be held on Tuesday, October, Tuesday, November the fourteenth, with the ordinance to extend the moratorium for an additional one hundred and eighty days, and the ordinance to approve a request by John Montesino Senior to revoke a right of way of Burner Street. Those items will be taken up on November fourteenth for public hearing at five thirty P M. Hammond City Council, regular session agenda, October twenty-four, twenty, October twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, five fifty, roll call, please.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Here.
Councilman Andrews.
Present. Our prayer, please. I would like to take a moment of silence in honor of those that lost their lives yesterday on I fifty-five. Eternal Father, we thank you on this evening, we give you glory, we give you honor, we give you praise, we give you thanks, let us do your name. Father God, thanking you for allowing us just one more day. Father God, we come boldly before your throne of grace and mercy, asking you to continue to guide us, continue to keep us right now, to handle, Father, continue to order our steps. Ask that you continue to bless our city, continue to bless our state and our country. Ask that you continue to bless our city leaders right now, continue to bless our police and fire department right now, Father God. Continue to touch our city employees. Father God, I ask that you continue to touch each council member here, their families, and continue to bless the districts in which they serve. Father God, we come this evening to do everything decent and order and pleasing in your sight. Therefore, you will get all glory and all honor and all praise, because we know that you are not the author of confusion. If there's ever a time we need you, Father, we need you right now. We just thank you for who you are. There's any sick among us right now, Father God, we ask that you continue to touch their bodies, give them healing right now, Father God. We come right now, Father God, asking that you continue to bind us together, where one will not fall without the other. We need you, we thank you for all that you've done, we thank you for your covering right now, keep us right now. Thank you for your darling son, Jesus, who died upon the cross just for our sins, in his name we pray, amen. All active military and prime military, we ask that you please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all. At this time on our agenda, I would like to ask for a motion to approve our October tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, please.
So move.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Astain.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
At this time, we'll have a presentation from the school board officials discussing the magnet school tax.
First, I wanted to just thank y'all for the invite to to come and talk to you about this. It's it's my understanding y'all want the short version of this, so because you have lots. I'm sorry, I'm Brett Duncan, I'm the school board representative for District E, which comprises primarily the the Hammond area. For most of y'all sitting at this table, I believe I am your school board representative, and it's an honor to to serve in that way. But also, again, just wanted to thank you for the invite to to come and talk about this. It's an important issue that's on the ballot on November the eighteenth. But before I do that, I also just wanted to thank you guys for the work that you do for the citizens of Hammond. I know that being a local elected official is a tough, emotional job. Most of what we hear as elected officials are are things that we're doing wrong, are things that need to be addressed. So it can sometimes be a thankless job. But I want you to know, as one of your constituents, that I appreciate the work that you do. I think we live in a great city, we have great constituents that we all work for. They deserve the best from us, and I think that they do get the best from each one of you guys. And and I just, I just want you to know that I appreciate you guys. So going to, and again, I'm doing the short version of this presentation, and I'll, of course, leave time for questions. But what's on the ballot for November the eighteenth is the question of whether we, as the folks here in the Hammond area, whether we want to continue our Hammond Magnet program. And so a little bit of history for anybody that's not familiar with this program. It's a program that started before I got on the board roughly in in two thousand and seven. And it began with conversations from our local Chamber of Commerce, along with North Oaks Health System, Southeastern representatives, and the elected members of of our city government at the time, that all recognized a problem with our Hammond schools. Specifically, a problem in the fact that they were under capacity, they were not fully utilized. They were not very diverse, and we had a situation within our community where anyone who could find a way to avoid sending their children to the Hammond Public Schools was finding a way to do it. And so all of us recognized that that was a serious problem, you know? Unhealthy schools create an unhealthy community. And they all wanted to work together with our school system to try and address that problem. So they came forward and partnered with the school system and essentially had a very basic idea, that if we can find a way to do some sort of enhancement in our schools, that perhaps this would attract people to come back to our schools, to give us another chance. And perhaps it would help with a diversity problem that we also had in our schools. At the time, by the way, our public schools in Hammond, the the court gives us a designation of either black or non-black. Our public schools in Hammond at the time were about eighteen percent non-black, so we had that issue as well. So they came forward with this idea of if we could add some enhancements to our schools, maybe that would help address the problem. We started out small with a little small program at Hammond East Side, we then grew that out a little bit larger. The school system secured a grant to to help initially fund the implementation of these various enhancement programs. And over the years, as we've we've kind of tinkered with that, we wanted to make sure that we had a way to sustain those programs. And so roughly ten years ago, the voters of Hammond, they kind of liked what we were doing, they wanted to make sure that we were sustaining it. And so they passed a dedicated revenue stream, a property tax millage of fifteen mills, to make sure that we had sustained funding to continue to do these enhancements in each of our schools. So that tax, it was a fifteen mil tax for ten years, it's coming up for renewal on November the eighteenth. And again, the question is, do we want to continue this progress? Do we want to continue to do these enhancements, or do we want to eliminate it? So the next thing, I guess, to just talk about is what So the next thing, I guess, to just talk about is what is the current enhancements at each of these schools? I won't go into detail, but I do want to tell you that just because we have these current enhancements, if we decide as a community that we want to continue to fund this program, that does not lock in the specific enhancements that we currently have. What it does is it provides us with, again, a dedicated funding stream to make sure that we can continue to fund enhancements. In fact, we have one particular school, Greenville Park Leadership Academy, that over the last 10 years, we have made various adjustments trying to find the right mix that would work for that specific school. And we've done different ones over the years. But what we're currently doing, Woodland Park receives funding to do a communications and technology magnet. In addition to funding that specific enhancement, we also recognize the importance of making sure that we had high-quality teachers in that school, along with at Greenville Park. So we have at those schools a, an extra stipend to attract high-quality teachers so that they will want to teach there. So that, we fund a portion of those stipends with our magnet tax. It also funds art, computer, a librarian, and Spanish instructors. And at, at Woodland Park, it's a pre-K campus, or it has, it offers pre-K. So we also fund extra pre-K spots at Woodland Park for families that maybe would not otherwise qualify for pre-care. Southeastern Lab receives funding for this program, particularly their art, music, and performing arts programs at Southeastern Lab is funded by the magnet tax. Hammond Eastside is an international baccalaureate and performing arts program. We're, we provide funding for eight extra positions at Hammond Eastside, a visual arts pro, visual arts, performing arts, Spanish, and a librarian. That's at both of our Hammond Eastside campuses. Hammond Westside is a Montessori school. We have 17 positions that receive funding at Hammond Westside from this magnet program that, which includes extra pre-K classes, music, art. The Montessori materials are very expensive, the training is very expensive. We also fund a language and librarian program there. Greenville Park, I mentioned that earlier, we have 10 extra positions at Greenville Park that are, that receive funding from this program, including those stipends, those incentive stipends that I mentioned. It's currently a stream and star accelerated magnet program. The interesting thing here is we were able to leverage our magnet program, our magnet dollars at this school to also get an extra grant from the governor's office just this past year, is an extra million dollars that we were able to leverage and bring in to Greenville Park. Hammond High Magnet School, we fund the international baccalaureate, Tark, Torbotics, Pro Start, JROTC, a medical magnet. All of those programs receive some funding through this program. There's 11 extra positions at Hammond High School receiving funding over and above the standard allotment. So those are the current enhancements. Again, we're not locked into those, these are conversations we can continue to have if we, if we as a community decide to keep the program. The question then is, has this worked? Have we achieved our stated goals? Well, in 2007, and of course, the answer is unequivocally yes. In 2007, our Hammond schools had 3,778 students attending. Of those 3,778, as I mentioned, 2,991 of them were black. So we had an 88, or an 82 and 18%. Most of our schools at the time were well under capacity. As of today, our Hammond schools have 4,903 students. That's an increase of 1,125 students. We achieved that increase despite having shrunk our attendance zones. We rezoned some of our attendance zones to Laranja and DePonchatula. We, we achieved that increase despite since then offering the option of students to transfer to other schools outside of Hammond, even though they live here in Hammond. And we achieved that increase despite the overall population of our, of our public schools in Tanjua Hohua Parish decreasing by 112 students. So while the rest of the parish has had a student population that has gone down, we in Hammond have increased our student population. We also achieved our diversity goals. Now, we have a diversity makeup of 60% black, 40% non-black. Three of our schools currently are 50/50. Hammond High, Hammond Eastside, and Hammond Westside all have a 50/50 diversity goal. We have achieved so much success that, again, campuses that were once under capacity, now we have a 14-classroom addition that we just completed at Hammond High School because we went from 900 students at Hammond High School to now having almost 1,700 students, which required us to build a 14-classroom addition. Hammond Eastside has had so much success, up until last year, we had a waiting list of families trying to get into Hammond Eastside. We actually had to buy and renovate an additional campus to accommodate the demand of students wanting to go into Hammond Eastside. And this year, we will break ground on an addition at Woodland Park Magnet School, where we will be building an additional classroom addition over at Woodland Park. Some other indicators of success, we've had over 700 students graduate from Hammond High School, having already earned over 3,000 college credits by the time that they graduate. That is money in their parents' pockets. So just to summarize, again, I believe we have achieved those goals. We certainly still have much more work to do as a community, but again, with our, with the continued commitment of our community, I know that we can continue to make progress. We do want to bear in mind that there are, again, 75 positions that receive funding from this special revenue fund, over and above what the public, what the school system funds through its general allotment. In addition, if we lose this program, we would be taking away power from our families. They currently have a very unique opportunity here to transfer to a school that best fits their child's needs, right? So we are not, we do not live in a community where your address dictates what is offered to you by the public school system. If you lived in any neighborhood neighboring parishes, where you live is where your child has to go to school. The community of Hammond gets the option. They can choose to go to the school that they're originally zoned to, or if IB is a better fit for them, they can transfer there. If Montessori is a better fit for them, they can transfer there. If we lose this program, we lose that power. We, we take that power away. So again, it's not a new tax, it's a renewal. If you live essentially in the Hammond attended zone, you're voting on whether you want to keep this program or whether you want to take it away. So I'll pause there, take any questions that anybody has. If you think of any questions, hopefully I'll let you guys know how to reach me. I'm happy to visit with you and, and answer any other follow-up questions that you have. Okay?
I want to appreciate you coming, Brett. You, you know, you didn't hesitate when I called to come, and, and that's what it's all about, to, you know, explain anything to the people that may have any questions, and it's good to know what's going on and what y'all working on and improvements and, and, yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you again for the invite, again. And let me know if you'd be of service to any of you.
I got a question. Because I heard you say something. You said the word black. And that caught my attention. And you said the word black. How many people, how many blacks that look like me? Because I want to make sure I'm very clear. That's on this board, y'all is making decisions because, and I say this because a lot of times, this is tax being renewed, right?
Yes, sir, it's renewed.
Okay. And from what I'm gathering, from what I heard, you know, that what's the Hammond High, what's Hammond High grade as of right now? What grade Hammond High have as of right now?
When you say grade, what are you referring to?
The, the, uh, the way the state do it, how they grade every school?
Yeah, you took, so that accountability metric?
Yeah. What grade Hammond High have?
It's a C, it's a C grade, but on the, but the good news is that U.S. News and World Report just recently released a ranking of all of our high schools in Tanjua Hohua Parish on a college readiness index. And Hammond High is the number one high school in Tanjua Hohua Parish when it comes to college readiness, according to the U.S. News and World Report.
Yes.
And look, I wanted to, because you mentioned that, when I use the term black and non-black...
Oh, no, no, I didn't get offended by it.
Okay, I just want you to know, I'm using the court's definition, and that's, and that's where it came from.
Oh, no, no, I didn't get offended by it. What grade the lab school have, because I heard you say money is funded through the lab school, to what grade the lab school have?
Lab school is currently, has consistently had an A ranking on the, on the, on the state's accountability index.
Okay. And, and let me say why I say this, why I'm asking this question. If the lab school been an A school for a long time, because I heard Hammond Junior High, we call it Hammond Junior High, that's in my district. If the lab school been an A school for a long time, why we don't model after the lab school with all the rest of the schools? And my daughter went to the lab school, she went to Hammond High, she went to St. Thomas, pretty much, she went to the school, she went to public schools and private schools.
Yeah.
And so we was able to send her to private school, but the ones that's not able to go to private school, and I hear you saying, you know, and it all of, you know, not only you, when people stand up before us, or when they talk to me, they make everything sound good. I heard you say about the residential. I done had so many people contact me because they need a certified letter, they need an address. So you make it sound good, but I don't have no kids in, in the school system, period. So let me say this, but I have nieces and nephews, and they have to use address of different people saying that they stay at my house. And I know, it's easy for you to say that, but you don't know, and that's the problem now. The administration never know what the little people have to go through. Now, I'm talking about parents now. So when the parents go through their cell, they need a letter saying that the kids stay at my house, or at Junebug House. So this what we see, you don't see it, but this what we go through all the time, because even one of my nephews, where his mom stay, she needed an address to be able to go to school, Hammond Junior High. And I'm saying that this what we go through in our community, trying to get to these schools that they want to go to. But the way you said it, it sounds so easy, and you know what I tell them? Well, call the school board, what the school board say? Well, they say I need a certifi, I need a lawyer, I need, and I tell everybody, I can't go by what nobody say. You call the school board and tell me what they say. And so you saying that, and they need to make the process easy, don't just stand up here and make it sound good, but yet, you know, the people have to go through this, trying to get an address and all of that. So I think that's something that, you know, your staff, you all need to work on, because that's, that's one of the things that I'm dealing with, and that I hear about, you know, even this year. I got a nephew right now, trying to, he should be going to school in Hammond, but where my mom stay, he have to go to school in Independence. So that's how I know what I'm talking about, because everybody contact me on how to do this, how to do that.
And, yeah, and I don't know which one of those you want me to address, or whether you want me to address, and I, I appreciate the, the input. The, that residence verification process, it can be burdensome. It's a, it's an aspect that is required under our current desegregation order and even state law. You know, we, we, you do, parents do have the option to transfer, but we do have to start that process by first verifying that they are, in fact, a resident of Tanjua Hohua Parish, who their custodian is, and, and, and verifying where they actually live. But then we do have committed now, recently, we opened up a registration center, a central registration center, and family advocates to try and help families kind of navigate through that process and give them the support that they need. You're absolutely right, especially at the beginning of the year, it is absolute chaos trying to go through all of those families that, a lot of them wait till the last minute to get their stuff in order and contact those, those registration centers, and then we have to figure that all out and line up bus transportation. It, it can be very cumbersome, and I, I agree with you. I wish we could make that a lot easier on families and give them additional supports to, to accomplish what they want to accomplish. But our goal is to, to help, help them navigate that process, and then also to have a, give them the ability that if their initial school of assignment is not a good fit for them, give them the ability to transfer to one of the other schools that is a good fit for them. And that addresses your question about the lab school, right? You know, the lab school is a good model. It works for the families that are currently there, obviously, because they have good school performance scores there. They, they're able to pass that test at the end of the year. It's all geared towards making sure that those kids can pass that test at the end of the year. But I would submit to you that that's not a good fit for every child. What, what is offered at, at SOU lab school is great, but it's not a good fit for every child. Some of those kids need something more like a Montessori program to be successful, where they can get an individualized pan, plan. They can have, have those, those, those teaching materials where they, they can actually adjust and, and learn from that, from those materials. That, those kids may need something different. And so maybe, and again, that's my view, is that we ought to empower a parent to say, you know what, if lab school doesn't work for me, or if IB doesn't work for me, there's another option over here, where these kids, these parents are trained in a model that works best for my kid, and we ought to empower them to do that. Any other questions that I can address?
Yeah, I still have another question I need you to answer them first. Why Hammond, the only city paying this tax?
Well, Hammond, again, was the one that recognized this specific need and stepped up to actually do it. In 2000, I want to say it was 2017, 2018, we went forward with an offer to the rest of the parish to do a similar program. It was called the Vision 2020 program, where we would have expanded this model out to the rest of the parish. Unfortunately, at the time at least, the rest of the parish declined to, to do that. And so my view is, you know, look, when the rest of the parish is ready, I am all for it. I think it's the right thing to do. We ought to, we ought to expand this model out. We ought to offer additional enhancements at every school. But until then, until the rest of the parish is ready to do it, by all means, the folks in Hammond ought to have the right to do it and to continue the progress we've made.
Well, you know, when you hit the word tax and millage, man, it scared me.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it scared me, so I just wanted you to know.
Me too. Look, there's very few taxes that, that this conservative Republican is, has been in favor of, but, but this one has proven itself, and it's a value. It has made our community stronger, and, and it's empowered families, and that's what I'm all about. And thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
I want to tell you thank you, man.
Hey, thank you.
And I appreciate, you know, coming up and speaking about it.
Yes, sir. All right, y'all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Final adoption of ordinance, old business number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance, excuse me, to approve a request by Mimi McCabe-Cutrell, owner to rezone 207 South Holly Street, per survey by Clifford Webb, dated 2/21/62, 1962, from RM-2 to MX-C, District 2, Lacy Landry.
Again, if there's anyone on this item, on the agenda, please step back to the microphone, give us your name and answer. Anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to deny.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance, new business number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve a request by Gloria Boyd to allow for a mobile home located at 707 Washington Drive in District 4, zoned RS-3, Z-2023-03-00120, with the following conditions. This is a personal right and expires upon a change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted to conditional use. Number two, it meets all the requirements in the Unified Development Code, Article 3, Section 3-4. Number three, the damaged mobile home currently on the property must be removed before a mobile home permit can be issued. Lacy Landry?
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this...
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this case due to Ms. Boyd's application to the Restore Program. So, right now, she is technically zoned at this parcel as RS three, which does not allow for the placement of mobile homes, even though there's one there existing now. Her mobile home was damaged during the storm, during Hurricane Ida, and she has applied for the Restore Program, which is a program aimed at replacing or placing brand-new mobile homes on parcels. However, she was denied her application because of the way of the zoning. The zoning does not allow the placement, so they automatically denied her application. So, she's hoping that if the rezoning, this expanded conditional use was allowed and permitted, that she could continue with her application and possibly receive one of the new mobile homes that would be placed. There is a single-family home on the north parcel that is a proposed mobile home area, there is the same on the south, to the west, it is vacant land that's outside the city limits, and then to the east, there are several mobile homes, and you can see in the pictures how those look surrounding in the packet that's attached. So, this is kind of a technicality in terms of helping her to be able to go forward with the program. If the program fails, she will not be placing a mobile home there, if she is successful, it would be a brand-new mobile home placed there. The one condition that we've added to this, it's a little different from past ones, is that the damaged mobile home would have to be removed from the current parcel before the new one is placed there. The commission did vote unanimously in favor of this, although one commissioner was absent from the meeting. So, again, the expanded conditional use would just be for Ms. Boyd, no other people could be allowed to have it, so if she transferred the property or somebody else came in, they would have to go through this process again.
And it's replacing the one that's already there, right?
It is replacing one that's already there.
And it's not currently zoned for one right now?
That's correct. It is in a proposed area, but that's that.
Yeah, it's proposed, it's not, yeah, big difference, yeah.
Correct. Before you as a council.
So, where is she living at right now? Is the mobile home's not, I mean, whatever's there is not livable?
I don't know that where she's living right now, I don't know if she's still living with a family member, she is quite elderly and she is also unable to drive, so I'm not sure where she's living right now.
That mobile home there right now is unlivable, that y'all are saying to remove before she hauls a new one in?
I don't know if it's fully unlivable. I know that the damaged mobile home that is on site would have to be removed before a new one could be placed there. We can't have two mobile homes on the same parcel.
I understand, but that structure there, that mobile, that is where her primary residence was before the storm, so that, right now?
Yes.
So, okay, and it's.
Is damaged enough that she is qualified or eligible for this program, I don't know if it is uninhabitable, I don't know that.
So, like I said, is anybody in here representing her?
I don't think anybody is here tonight. Like I said, she, because this wasn't for final adoption, she's unable to drive and she's quite elderly, so, again, we can make sure that she can make this next meeting, but I don't know that she is here tonight. And I don't think there's any, there's any family members here representing her tonight.
So, those other meetings, when she go to planning and zoning, who in there for planning and zoning for her?
I do not know that she had a family member there representing her. I think at the work session, there was somebody there, I don't know if at the final meeting there was. She has come in several times to the office and she has someone bring her each time.
The notes say her niece.
Yeah, her niece Jessica Anderson, yeah, thank you, I was trying to read as I was talking. So, we can make sure that Ms. Jessica or somebody else is here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
Make the motion introduce.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divertario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Public hearing will be scheduled for November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Introduction of ordinance number two.
Alton Lewis, I don't know all of you, but hearing the discussion about the schools today, I've been around here for a long time, the improvement in the schools has been fantastic, the improvement in the city of Hammond has been fantastic, and it's all due to the leadership that we have in the city, and part of that improvement in leadership may be in some of the people that I knew when they were children, are now like on council and stuff like that, now it's a way of being better, smarter people. Anyway, I just want to thank y'all for what you've done, thank you, Andre, thank you, Lacy, I'll get out of your way, but y'all are doing a fantastic job, the city of Hammond shows, thank you.
Thank you. Number two.
Introduction of an ordinance proposing an election to determine amendments to the City of Hammond Home Rule Charter, providing for an elected chief of police and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Councilman Wells?
Thank you. Well, we've been talking about it for a long time, and since the shooting incident, it really come to light when the community was reaching out, trying to get information on the shooting. Nothing was released, nothing was talked about, and that's how this was able to come about, the Charter Review Committee had talked about several things, and I attended some of their meetings, and just like me being an elected official, and I think if we had elected a chief of police, I think we'll get more insight on what's going on versus being appointed, and so, that's how this here come about. That's it.
Anybody?
It's Al Nicholas over to give my address. I'm in favor of an election, you know, in some of the parishes, I understand statewide that a lot of chiefs are elected, and so, and my concern is that if he's elected by the people, then he's going to represent the people a lot more. So, I'm in favor, you know, of this introduction to the election of the chief of police. Thank you.
Anyone else? Make a motion, please. Make a motion to approve. Second, introduce.
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 Second.
Councilman Wells?
Yes.
Councilman Divertario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Public hearing, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, five thirty.
Resolutions, nine, old business, old business number one.
A resolution to approve annual alcohol renewals for twenty twenty-four, Lacy Landrum.
As we discussed at the last meeting, you all received your green sheets that had the list of all the businesses, the same list is also attached to the council agenda. This is the annual renewals of all the alcohol licenses throughout the city. We do this based on a little bit different schedule than what is required of ATC, they have an additional process, and so, we try to do ours so that then applicants can complete their ATC process as well. I know that there were some questions last time about audits and about when those had occurred. Our paperwork does require that you are swearing, it is notarized that you are swearing that you're providing true and correct information about the total gross sales, the number of, the amount of food sales versus alcohol sales in those same percentages for restaurants. We do audit based on complaint system, and the last time there was an audit was of one of our businesses that has since come into compliance and done really well, so, these are all here, if anybody has any questions.
I want to say thank you also, because I'm the one that had asked the questions, and I want to thank you for providing that information for me.
You're welcome. And the other thing I forgot to mention, because I did email that to you as well, the ATC also has similar paperwork, so if someone is being untruthful, they are being untruthful to the city and to the state, which is probably not recommended.
Is there anyone else here on this item? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Stay.
Councilman Divertario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Resolution number two, old business.
Good evening. When I was talking about the chief, I was writing my address, because I got something to say, but I wait, you know, I wait a little bit, but anyway, my name, Alex Martinez, address one one zero East Calmen. This had nothing to do with selecting chiefs or no that, but I do need some support over that. About the building, about probably a couple months ago, maybe three, quite three years, and I got some AC units installed last week on Thursday night, three big unit, three tons AC unit, commercial, got installed for the building. That's the kind of, I guess, police patrol we got over here, but it's obvious when somebody goes to those big unit in the middle of the night, this is, that's what happened. And, you know, I just want to put that out there, you know, that happened last week on me, and just a couple blocks from the police station. I mean, ridiculous, right? But we needn't focus to disprotect the community instead of talking over here about this, the color white, black and white, it's not about black and white anymore, guys. I saw the gentleman over here talking about the school programs and all that stuff. You go to Hammond High, you go see that at least thirty percent over there is Latinos and Chinese and all the, you know, all the communities. So, instead of talking about black and white, let's talk about America, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Old business, resolution number two.
A resolution to approve Family Dollar Store number two one six three six at one two five North Morrison Boulevard, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, to obtain a permit to sell packaged high-low alcohol. The owner is Family Dollar Store of Louisiana LLC, District Two, Lacy Landrum.
As stated, and as attached to the agenda, is just the quick summary of this location, they are just wanting to add alcohol sales at this location of one twenty-five North Morrison. You're going to see the next resolution applies to a different store at a different location. Also forwarded to the council was a letter from their consultants that kind of talk about all of the procedures that they go through in terms of training their employees, about how to verify birth dates with their scanners, and also how to verify licenses and look at all of those. And they're just emphasizing too that their pricing on alcohol is similar to what you would find in grocery stores pricing, so they don't sell like discount liquor, they don't have lots of bulk sales, those kinds of things, and there is a representative here, Rob Hosack.
So, it says, both of these say that District Two, those are not, neither of those are in my district, just pointing that out, they're, neither of these two, next ones are in District Two.
Good evening, honorable members of the council, my name's Rob Hosack, I'm with Decisions Consulting, based in Atlanta, Georgia, and basically are here to address any concerns or answer any questions that the council may have. I believe Ms. Landrum had referenced a letter from a colleague of mine that spells out basically the company's efforts to make sure that, one, they're not going to be competing with a convenience store or become a package store. In addition to the safeguards that Ms. Landrum mentioned, there are a couple of other things that we feel are noteworthy. There are security cameras in place specifically, looking at this small, very small portion of the stores that will be dedicated to selling beer and wine for take-home consumption only. It is really in response to customers that had expressed the desire to be able to purchase beer or wine, and it's low alcohol, we don't sell high alcohol volume ABV beer or wine. It's simply an opportunity to hopefully allow somebody to purchase beer or wine while they're shopping, as opposed to having to go to another location. Do not sell singles, do not advertise or put placards on the windows as far as Bud Light for sale or Gallo wines for sale, don't sell vape products, and with those security cameras, if there is a concern, we have in the past partnered with local law enforcement, happy to make any of those videos available to the local law enforcement authorities. Did want to mention, Family Dollar also employs a vendor, outside vendor, to do a mystery shopper program that we have found to be very successful. In closing, honorable council members, did want to mention that on a national level, with some thirty-eight hundred plus or minus stores, there is less than a one and a half percent rate of violations for underage sales or any type of violations nationally to the stores that we have. So, I appreciate your time and attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that the council may have, sir.
I did just plug this into our GIS map to confirm, this one is in.
It's in my district, yeah, District Four.
Al Nicholas, I'm just concerned with, it says here a permit now, does this mean you get a permit from the state, or is it just from the city? That's what I'm concerned about.
Sir, actually, we're in the process, we'll have to satisfy the state with evidence that we have met the local governing jurisdictions permitting process. So, yes, sir.
They have to have both. They have to have both.
And I'm sorry for the long answer to your question.
So, this location has never had alcohol before?
Correct. This one, according to your report, has been there since nineteen eighty-nine, has never had alcohol, this would be an addition.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns on this particular item? Not pleasure of the council.
Make a motion approve?
Second. Councilman Divertario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Resolution number three, old business.
A resolution to approve Family Dollar Store number two eight four three nine at one three five five Highway one ninety east, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, to obtain a permit to sell packaged high-low alcohol. The owner is Family Dollar Store of Louisiana LLC, not sure the district.
It is District One, went into, just to verify, it's right on the edge. This is similar to what we just discussed, this location has not had alcohol before, the store has been there since twenty-ten, and they are wanting to add alcohol sales, it has the same type of letter that was approved for the other one, and Mr. Rob is here representing this one as well.
Is this the one going out towards the airport?
Anyone from the audience have a question or concern on this item?
District one, in our district, we don't need nobody else selling no more alcohol out there. I told them, our neighborhood is probably about the worst district in the city, Dollar Store doing pretty good without alcohol, but the one right there don't need alcohol, they got a gas. They got a gas station that sell alcohol right next to them. Don't need no more alcohol.
Pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Thank you.
My excuse.
Thank you.
New Business Number One, we got number four on here.
A resolution to authorize the Hammond Downtown Development District and its approved merchants to serve, sell, or otherwise handle alcohol during Starry Saturday, held on Saturday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, from eight AM to nine o'clock PM. The event boundaries are East and West Roberts Street, North and South Cherry Street, East and West Coleman Avenue, and North and South Magnolia Street. Michelle Kendall.
Good evening, council. We have Starry Saturday back, sorry, my voice is very hoarse. That's Starry Saturday back on November eighteenth. It's our kickoff to holiday shopping and the holiday season in downtown. We are partnering with several folks for this event. I don't know if you've gotten a poster, but I've got a few here, can pass those out. So, we've got a full day planned out, how we have. Most of our events over to the Saturday to have our, more of our merchants participate and really promote a full day of activities for downtown. This item in question, we are looking to do a holiday wine and cheese walk from four to seven, and we are limiting ticket sales to three hundred tickets, so it's a smaller scale than Hot August, and we will have wine and cheese as a part of the event. So, we are handling this. Last time, we worked with the Hammond Regional Arts Center for Hot August, but our staff is handling it. All the other partners that we have, you can kind of list it there, and we're excited to offer this full day of activity in downtown.
Anyone from the audience on this particular item, resolution? Pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Resolution Number Five.
Resolution to grant a waiver of the City of Hammond's Open Container Law for the Hammond Downtown Development District's Starry Saturday Event on Saturday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, from eight AM to nine PM. The event boundaries are East and West Roberts Street, North and South Cherry Street, East and West Coleman Street, and North and South Magnolia Street. Michelle Kendall.
Same event, same scope here, just part of the open container waiver.
Anyone from the public on this item? If not, pleasure the council.
Motion to approve.
No, I just had a question here. It says approved members, approved merchants only. Let's say I wanted to come in, you know, and I got to get approved by the city apparently? Is that right, council?
DDD.
The DDD.
We basically hold a special event permit for our merchants to host a wine and cheese stroll. They register for that, so they register through us, so they're, basically, the way it reads is they're our approved merchants, and we have a process to ensure that it's our brick and mortar establishments and some of our sponsors, but they basically go through us to be approved. No one can just set up a tent and table and sell alcohol outside of their business if they don't have an ATC license, so they go through our processes to register to be a part of that.
Okay, so, so in other words, I got to come to you if I want to.
Yes, but it is only open to our sponsors and our downtown development district businesses that are physically located within our district.
Anyone else? Pleasure the council.
Motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Thank you, thanks, Michelle.
Michelle, I'm going to forward you an email I received in reference to a property in the DDD, three eleven West Thomas Street is the address. And I'll forward you the email along with everything that was sent to me, and we'll just go from there.
You have the link for it.
Okay, thank you. Resolution Number Six.
A resolution to approve the twenty twenty-three annual subscription cost of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars and recurring annual subscription cost going forward for the Hammond GIS. Lacy Landrum.
So, this was a quote that we received. This is actually an annual renewal of existing software that we have. Our, and I know this has a lot of funny words in it, but our ESRI software is for our GIS, which is our geographical information system. It's our mapping system. It integrates with our permitting process, is open to the public, it's what I just referenced to double-check the council districts. It has all of our zoning information, our overlays, the actual ownership of each parcel, often have a survey attached and all the flood zones. So, it's, internally, we can also use it to realize where our infrastructure is and to talk about how that has been improved or when last repairs were made. So, this is just our annual subscription, twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. It is for small governments, which they consider up to twenty-five thousand in population.
Anyone in the audience here on this resolution?
Good evening. So, Dr. Landrum, will that recurring, will it remain the same, like twenty-seven five? Because you're approving for it to recur, so you don't have to come back before the council, right? So, will that remain twenty-seven thousand five hundred every time? Is that a locked-in price?
I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't tell you if it's locked in. What they did tell us is that they anticipate this to be the same or similar pricing, they don't anticipate a lot of increase, maybe up to a five percent or so increase, but that would not be, we would have to come back and reconsider, I think, as a whole, because this is budgeted item, so it is kind of approved there first, but then we would have to consider if they came back with a really large increase, whether we wanted to maintain the system or not.
What do we have budgeted for it right now?
This is within the budget already.
I know, but is it, is it, I don't know if you knew off the top of, where was it maxed out at? Is it thirty budgeted for it, or is it forty-five or fifty thousand we have budgeted?
We typically try to get an annual quote before we produce the budget, so that we can have a pretty accurate number of what we expect it to be. I don't know offhand what this one was budgeted for. All of our subscriptions, dues and subscriptions are within the same line items, so it has several software packages in there together. But I can find out if we had, this is.
This is for one year.
Right.
Just for one year.
Right.
I apologize, Tracy Wells, six ten Mooney Avenue. I was looking at Miss Sager, so.
Anyone else? Pleasure the council. Make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Resolution Number Seven.
A resolution, one, accepting a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Community Water Enrichment Fund for improvements to the city's water system, and two, authorizing the mayor and his designate to complete and sign related documents. Lacy Landrum.
This is good news, it's accepting a fifty thousand dollar grant. The first attachment is the resolution that supports this. This is the same application that you all approved earlier before the grant was submitted. It is for a fifty thousand dollar grant, we do intend to use it, and it'll depend on final pricing, but the initial quotes that we had when we put this grant application together about a year ago, was that we would be able to install somewhere between five and eight inserta valves, that should say inserta, not insertion. It's what you put on an existing water line, it gives you the ability to not only kind of restrict the pressure that's coming through that line, but also turn it off and isolate an area if you cannot repair the line while it's still live. What we try to do over and over again is repair lines live, I sometimes joke that our water utility team is a scuba diving team, because they'll end up with a giant thing of water and be able to go down under there and put a sleeve on it to make the repair. But when there is too much pressure in the line or in the area itself, or when it's just a large area, sometimes they do have to do shut-offs. What the valves enable us to do is minimize the area of shut-off, so that it impacts fewer residents and fewer customers when they do actually have to do a full shut-off to make the repair. So, this is a really great investment for our water system.
They have a map of places, I think there was one or two along Magazine Street area, there's one over on Natchez, I don't have the other locations with me, but we can get those to you if you need it.
It will really depend on whether we get to do five or eight. We hope for good pricing.
Anyone else in the audience on this resolution? Any question from anyone on the council? Pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution Number Eight.
A resolution, one, approving Hammond North Shore Regional Airport, twenty twenty-four through twenty-eight Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. Two, requesting that the Louisiana Department of Transportation and the Developments Division of Aviation provide funds required to complete the airport improvements specifically described in the airport's CIP application. Three, agreeing to certain assurances related to the proceedings. Four, authorizing the mayor and Hammond City Council President to sign the CIP documents. And five, authorizing a Hammond City Council Clerk to attest to these signatures. Lacy Landrum.
I know that was a mouthful, most of that's required exact wording by the grant, so I apologize in advance. This is the annual plan that you all look at for capital investments out of the airport itself. The main things, this is always due at the beginning, towards the beginning of November. It is a collaborative effort that's done by the FAA, by our DOTD Aviation Agency, and by the city. All of the federal projects require a ten percent match from the state, and all of the state-funded projects have a flat twenty thousand dollar local match, which is already anticipated and placed in the airport's budget. And again, all of these would come before you again when the contract itself comes up, so this is a plan of attack, so to speak, of improvements for the airport. Any questions about these? And really, what we focus on the most and make sure with the engineers and with the other agencies is that twenty twenty-four is as clear as possible, the others are always in flux, and we get to renew those or refine those annually.
Yeah, I know we've done this before, and I said at the time, I just wanted to be very clear, and everybody understands that even though there's a city match listed on these, it doesn't necessarily mean we're committed to that in these.
That is correct.
These coming years.
What we do is we come before you again, even on these projects, we come before you again, because often what will happen is that we'll secure a match through another grant source or through state capital outlay.
And they've done a great job of that, I don't, I can't recall any, any funding for the airport, off the top of my head, without where we needed city money for. Almost everything seems to be grant and money, which is great.
Anyone else on this resolution? Any other questions or concerns from the council? If not, pleasure the council.
Motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Reports, mayor.
I'd like to thank everyone for, that came out to the airshow, I'd like to thank all of our sponsors and volunteers that made it possible, we had a great event, and it was a, it was a good success, so thank you to everyone that supported it.
And council reports?
Yeah, I'd certainly like to say thank you to the whole city for the wonderful airshow that we had, that was amazing, and to see something like that in Hammond, Louisiana, I think is a real tribute to, real tribute to our city. Also, District Five is going to have a town hall meeting on November the sixth, and you'll see, you'll see all kinds of advertisement about it. This is to discuss the vacant property that's across from Woodbridge on North Oak, Woodbridge subdivision on North Oak. We're going to have parish and city officials there to look at the various options, talk about the property, there's so many rumors that are going around, that we really need to hear from the people who do this for a living, and get, and get input on what can and can't be done there, and what some of the restrictions are, et cetera. We'll also have the city's engineer, and I believe the parish is also, to talk about drainage, and we'll be able to answer, they'll be able to answer questions about drainage in that, in that area and District Five as a whole. So, it'll be right here, November sixth, five thirty PM, in the city hall chambers, and I'm sure we'll have a, I'm sure we'll have a good crowd. Thank you.
I had just a couple calls coming Villawest area, just for some, some debris pickup, I think they're still from that storm that came through there, Reece Simone area, just may want to pass through, I mean, they may pick it up tomorrow or the next day, but just may want to get some guys to drive through there to make sure that they, they get that out of there. And then, I was just checking to see if, did y'all make any progress looking into that Chauvin area, where Old Baton Rouge is, trying to see what's the first step to actually do a little more than just put up a little warning sign, just something a little more engineered that may consist of a little bit bigger of a project, but safety.
So, one of the possibilities, and I just saw these in action, is lit delineator signs. Delineators are the ones that show you the arrows to go in a certain direction, the big yellow ones, but these actually have lights as part of them that may stand out better during nighttime settings, which is probably when this is more unsafe. I know before they installed some kind of like, Robert Morgan used to call it the catch pit, it was something that would help catch cars as they were kind of going off the road, so that they would realize, I'm, kind of like the delineators are on the highway itself already. So, we'll look at those and see if that's, I'm going to send you the pictures of those and see if that's kind of what you have.
Yeah, that'd be nice, give me some pictures, so I can let a lot of the people that live around there to have the concern, and, you know, and get it addressed, because I'd like to, it's been like that for a while, but do it the right way to make sure that, you know, it, I don't want to catch them, I want to stop them from going off, so, I mean, you know, I'd like to warn them a little ahead of time in that little area, so, yeah, that'd be great, send some things over, and I can get some feedback as well from, from the subdivisions over there on, on any improvements or requests that they can come up with that might be able to work. I don't know if, does that have to all go through the state, or can, can the city, you know, kind of do what they need to do as long as it's not obstructing the state highway?
In the past, there were delineator signs already there, so I don't, I don't think the state's going to object to these. These are used on highways routinely, so I'm sure, as long as we work together, we can get that done.
I'll just point out tomorrow's trick-or-treating in downtown Hammond, not the Halloween trick-or-treating, just the downtown DDD trick-or-treating, and that Halloween trick-or-treating is on Tuesday night, what time does that start?
Six.
Six, okay. Five to eight? Look at the website, there's, there's a thing on that. Yes, so tomorrow's the DDD trick-or-treating. And also commend everyone, especially Lacy, I know you were the chairperson of the airshow, so y'all did a great job, it was a wonderful event, and a great event for the city.
Again, echo on that, the airshow was a total success. Lacy, I'm going to forward you in on the same email that I'm going to send to Michelle, and you got it, you got it, okay. Well, Councilwoman Gonzalez is on top of it, then, okay? But I'm going to send you two other emails, I need some assistance on some stuff in District One. All right? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Submove.
Meeting adjourned.